Tuesday, September 24th, 2019 at 5:05 PM. Roll call.
Alderman Persson's Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Capusta.
Here.
Borgman.
Here.
Amel.
Here.
And Wolf.
Here.
Mayor Shumah.
Here.
You have a quorum present.
Thank you, and then statement of public notice.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Approval of the September 10th, 2019 minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. The minutes are approved unanimously. Uh, new business, we have Resolution 80, 2019, Resolution to Determine the City of Meskigo and Little Meskigo Lake Roles and Responsibilities with regard to Lake Management Drawdowns, Dredging Projects, and Equitable Lake District Fee Payments. Uh, this is for discussion, it is on council deferred. Um, the reason it is here is, in the event, because we have budget on here, that you wanted to talk specifically about that. In addition, um, just wanted to update you on, um, at your direction, Committee of the Whole, Alderman Engelhardt, myself, and Scott Krager, the Director of Public Works and Development, had met, uh, can't remember the date anymore, with the President of the Lake District, uh, Steve Olson, and explained the council's, uh, desire to move away from the 15 percent and asked for a, from them, a phased-in, uh, process. They did not provide one, but you did. And, um, additionally, when we met, and I know Alderman Engelhardt and Scott would recall, uh, the topic of fireworks came up, that they might choose not to fund it. Um, and I did say at that time, if that was the case, it was certainly something I'd put on Committee of the Whole for the future. Um, and that would be something we'd talk about much later, but most municipalities don't fund it, it's, it's done by private organizations or, and/or donations. So, just wanted you to at least have that information, because I wasn't sure if we ever mentioned that.
When was the meeting? When did it take?
John had updated you guys, well, I don't even know. I might have it on my phone.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Just approximately, a couple of months ago, or?
Probably.
Yes, we did that back in the summer.
About two months ago.
Okay. I just want to get an idea.
It's a couple of months back, at least.
Yeah.
So, out of that meeting, what, what was the outcome?
That was to advise.
That was your direction, for us to just inform them.
To advise the proposals, uh, to the, that was the first the Lake District was advised of it, basically, right? Am I correct on that, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Inform them of this resolution.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on that?
I would like to see us discuss that, uh, part of the, uh, the proposal where the, where the funds are cut. Uh, I would like to go back to that resolution and make a, make a amendment.
Before you, if I could, we did fail to do this, you all should have in front of you, and I don't know where mine is now, the, um, Lake District Newsletter that has their proposed budget, they do not include, and, I mean, I understand why, but they do not include, so you should open it up and look at it. They do not include the extra $10,000 that this resolution at your direction has, so I just want you to be aware of that. Um, even though it, their budget does not include that contribution from the city, um, you had Alderman Engelhardt and I communicate that to them, and I certainly recommend that you follow through with that, and then they can adjust their budget accordingly. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
So, can you help me understand this? Last year, what did we give them for total funding? I'm confused now.
What, this year for 2019?
For last year.
Thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Roughly forty thousand.
Okay, so what are you proposing for this year, then?
Is what you proposed.
Right, what are we proposing?
The, the, the...
Because I did not vote for that, but go ahead.
The twenty-eight parcels, which they have calculated at roughly seven thousand, and an additional ten thousand.
It was about twenty thousand's cut.
Twenty thousand less?
Right.
Okay.
I'm just asking.
No, ten thousand.
And, 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 and first of all, I think, uh...
Twenty-seven thousand.
I think Neil was cut off, and, and, I think Neil had...
I'd like everybody to raise their hands, so we can have one at a time to speak.
I think Neil had the floor, and he was talking, and he was cut off, and no one raised their hand. I think he had the right to finish what he was saying. I'd like to hear it.
Thank, thank you.
Could I clarify the math? He said thirty-seven thousand, this is twenty-seven thousand, so it's not, just want to clarify. Go ahead.
Um, I, I think the, uh, the agreement that we, as a city, has had with the Lake District goes back many, many years, and, uh, probably both of us have made a, a, a mistake in not finalizing it, not putting it in, in verbiage. But, it was, it was a, a result of a lawsuit and a very, very long-drawn-out affair, as I, as I recall. Um, where we, where the city, um, agreed to contribute fifteen percent to the weed cutting. I, I certainly can't see where we, as a, as a, as one government can just go back to another government and say, "Sorry, we're going to change our mind," uh, without, without some proper hearings, without some proper work being set down. And I, I, I just, I just can't see that we should be, we should be changing that, and I, I think the Lake District and the Lake District, the fact that the Lake District does such a good job in maintaining Meskigo Lake, and it brought it back really from where it was quite, quite sad years ago, to a point now where, where people are clamoring, in some cases, to get onto the lake, and even tearing down older houses to build newer, bigger ones. Um, I, I think it's, I think it's, uh, um, I think it's a revenue driver, not only for the city, but it's also a, a, something that we, as a city, can point to as something that's, that we should be proud of, and something that we should definitely, um, contribute to and, and, and go along with. And because of the fifteen percent has been kind of an immortalized, immemorialized, uh, number, I would, I would like to see if we couldn't change this council resolution to start, were now, there now therefore be it resolved, I want to go back to the fifteen percent. I want to, however, um, it is, it has always been something that I thought was, was in error, or was, was a problem with the agreement that we had with the Lake District, that there was no cap on it. Whenever you're trying to do any, any kind of budgeting, you're always looking for a number that you can put in that will not exceed this number. And what, what I, what I would like to see us do is say that we will contribute fifteen percent up to a, a certain number, and I would, I would say that that number should be found by taking the last five years' budgets of the, of the Lake District, adding them together, finding an average, and saying that we will pay up to that amount, fifteen percent or up to that amount, um, for the, the foreseeable future here.
Three thousand bucks.
And, and all of the information that goes on there about, about changing things and, and cutting it down in the future and everything, I just feel that that's really short-sighted in, in the, uh, the fact that the lake and the, uh, the, the Lake District contributes so much to the, to the value of the city and to the tax value of the city.
Are you making a motion?
That's my motion.
We're, this isn't really...
This is, this is, we're just discussing right now. You, you can do that in a bit, but we got to finish.
He made a motion, I second it.
It'll be on the floor later, this is just discussion.
This is discussion, this is not a formal action here.
If we make a motion to move it up for what he said, we can do that, and I second it.
Don't you guys want more discussion about it?
We can still discuss after you second it, right?
Yeah.
We always do.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, I'll start the discussion then.
Alderman Kubaki.
Um...
Raise his hand.
I had mine up, too.
The city, the city has more than one lake. Uh, Little Meskigo Lake is one of three. Big Meskigo Lake receives no funding, and they have, you know, housing stock that certainly approaches, uh, uh, that and Little Meskigo Lake. Uh, Lake Tenoun has a Lake District as well, they receive no funding whatsoever. We've been trying to, over the years, uh, achieve some sort of consistency and some parity. Um, this is so far out of whack with forty-some thousand dollars going to one Lake District and none to the other two, it just doesn't seem right. As far as housing stock, you've got subdivisions here that have homes that are at the same levels as many, many homes on Little Meskigo Lake, so, uh, generates the same kind of tax dollars. Interestingly enough, if you take a look through this, through this budget, um, and I've gotten emails from people about how their costs are going to change. In 2017, the assessment for riparians, for lake residents, was four hundred dollars, and for off-lake people was eighty dollars. And that was in, in seventeen. In 2018, that dropped to three hundred and eighty dollars, uh, for on-lake people and seventy-five for off-lake. In 2019, it dropped once again to three twenty-five and sixty-five for off-lake people. And in their budget, which again, doesn't include the ten thousand dollar item that was in the resolution, the lake fees are budgeted to go to three eighty, which is the same level they were at last year and less than they were the year before that. Uh, so, I, I don't see any harm being done to the lake residents, uh, given that those fees have dropped. As far as fireworks, uh, in 2017, the actual firework cost was seven thousand, in 2018 it was seven thousand, in 2019 it, it overdoubled, went to fifteen thousand. And by the way, I've never seen the fireworks on Lake, Little Meskigo Lake. Um, and in 2020, it's at fifteen thousand. So, you're asking all the residents of the city to support one Lake District. It's almost like having a, um, a subdivision ask that we mow their grass. I mean, uh, we don't do that for another subdivision, and they add economic base to our, our, our community as well. So, I, I think the resolution that we have in, in force or in proposed is certainly more than adequate for, uh, for this purpose.
I, I want...
Can you please raise our hands? Alderman Borgman, thank you.
I won't, I won't argue anything about the fireworks, but, but I will say that to try to compare, um, the lakes and, and say that they have to have equal, is, is, they're very different lakes, and you know that, and you know that, and it's kind of just a ruse to even put it up here, because we've talked about that at length in some of these other meetings, and that the links, the lakes are just so different that you can't possibly compare them and say, everybody's got to get the same. Uh, that's just not, just not, and that's just not a valid argument, and just, just put it up, it's just a ruse. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
It's funny that you say that, because last meeting you proposed that we do the, the same thing for all lakes. Very odd, Neil. Um, kind of flip-flopping here a little bit. It's not a ruse, it's, and, it's an actual fact, that the lakes, uh, all provide certain economic benefits. All lakes, uh, people use, people live on, people improve. Uh, you talked about people taking your homes down and erecting lakes. That happens on every single lake, not just Little Meskigo Lake.
But the lakes are different. They're, 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 one is a dam impounded lake, the other is a, is a, a, a high, a low water or low-level marshy-type lake, and, and, and Tenoun, too, is, is totally different again. It's not even, it's not even, uh, it's not even impounded, so...
Alderman Engelhardt.
To try to, to try to compare the three is, and, and, is, is just, just not, just not right.
Alderman Engelhardt.
Uh, the number of houses in the, um, in the Little Meskigo Lake District and the number of improved houses is significant, and it has contributed a great about, uh, to the, to the tax base in the city of improved revenue because of the many houses in the last thirty years where I've lived within the Lake District, close to the lake. House after house after house has grown, and, uh, certainly the taxes have gone up monumentally on them. So, there is a great revenue, uh, advantage in the city because of the cleaning up of that lake. Uh, that cannot be denied. Um, one other point I want to make to what Kevin said a minute ago. Uh, these last couple of years, the Lake District has experienced some real abnormal years as far as the budgeting. Um, they were allowed to have no, uh, chemical treatment for weeds for one of those years because of the extended drawdown, uh, which changed the budget considerably, thus they could drop the amounts of charges, but that will come back, as you can see by the same, uh, data that's been given to us, uh, it is increasing again, and the weed control is a necessity. It will, it will have to be, uh, addressed as we go forward, so their budget, uh, will have to include that, uh, in, going forward. So, it's, it's a different picture than is, um, as seems apparent off of this. So, I, I, I think that there is a reason to, uh, share back for what the community has benefited from this, uh, this lake and the efforts of the Lake District. Uh, this has also been the precedent for so many years, um, I, I don't understand why we would change it by about seventy-five percent.
Alderman Wolf.
Well, I, I heard at last meeting in, um, I, I don't know what's, what's, uh, fact or not, that, if I remember correctly, that at one point, they, the city wanted to go to ten percent, and they went to twenty, and mediated down to fifteen percent. So, I don't know what the legal ramifications of all that was, and I don't know if you checked into that, Jeff?
Yeah.
In the past, and what, what, uh, was there a lawsuit? I mean, could there be another one because of this, as, as, as was brought up in the last meeting?
Well, what happened is, um, there was a, an increase. We always paid ten percent of their budget. This thing about weed harvesting, it was always supposed to be used for weed harvesting, but it was always tied to the budget, so it was ten percent of the budget. What happened is at a meeting that the Little Meskigo Lake District had, they just increased it to twenty percent, and there wasn't any discussion on it, it just got increased to twenty percent. The city got wind of that, city wasn't at the meeting or anything, got wind of that, and started an action, that action's called a rid of servirari. It really isn't like the city paid anything and was asking for money back. We just went to another court, the Circuit Court, which is a higher court, and said, "You should change what the other government body, Little Meskigo Lake District, did." So, that's kind of where that all shook out. It ended up going to mediation. From what I could read, both, you know, both sides had good points, I know our brief did, and so my guess is, because this happens all the time, is a person sat down and said, "Okay, city, you're at ten, and Little Meskigo, you're at twenty, how about you guys just settle in the middle?" And I'm ninety percent sure of that, because that's usually what happens. And so, it settled at fifteen percent, and it was fifteen percent of the budget, and that's what it's been ever since then. In terms of a future lawsuit, I, like, it's hard for me to answer for you.
I didn't know if there was one in the past, that's mainly what I was talking about.
Yeah, so it's hard for me to answer. Could there be something?
Probably always could be, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I understand that. So, so, um, what I'm thinking i- is more on the, on the, uh, line of Neil. Uh, I, I think we're looking to fix something that's not broken, and I think that we should have more meetings in the future, uh, kind of like what we're looking at the senior taxi. I, I think that we need to have the city and the Lake Commission, uh, or District, whatever, have some more get-togethers for the following year, and take a look at where this can go in the future. I, I like the proposal that Neil has, at least right now, gives you, uh, something and a cap. And, um, the reason this has been brought up, and, and in theory it was all good, and yeah, we all agreed, and, and maybe we do flip-flop sometimes, but, you know, I remember a, a trail going in, um, on Hillendale, and it was all in a proposal, and people came up, and then nobody wanted it, so I, to me, that's a flip-flop, too, but, uh, it was in the proposal to, to have one, and, uh, the residents showed up, and, so that's a flip-flop. So, there's a lot of flip-flops in here, little things, little, you know, and I said it last night, it's the beauty about being up here, you can change your mind, and, and you can, you can support the people for what they want. We have a, a landfill that donates a lot of money back to us every year, or pays us back, or whatever it is, and it's for the quality of life. And the quality of life, there's a lot of reasons for the quality of life. You can, you can say, this is one right here. Um, you know, and, and when we went through MAA and all these other things, and, and the prices went up, and I said, "Well, you know, can you not afford it?" Probably not, you know, i- it, the problem is, 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 should you? Is it an extra tax, extra fee? Should there be more notifications? Should be more meetings? Should there be more working together with the city? Um, because I find there's less and less community activities that the city wants to support, and, uh, that's my perspective. And I think, I think it's absolutely wrong when we have money coming in that can support these things, and, and, uh, it's, it's for the quality of life. So, I, I believe that right now that we should go back to the old, at least for this year, the city should talk with the Lake Commission, and should figure out a plan, and everybody should be happy. It shouldn't just have to have, come to a head in one meeting where we have to make a decision. Um, although we did talk about it at a cow two months ago, you guys don't know that. You, you know, I mean, as an average citizen, before I came up here, I didn't know half of everything that was going on in the city until it happened, and I, I was one of those people that said, "Why did that happen?" Well, you know, I did something about it, and got on the board, and, and decided to, be one of those crazy people to speak their mind up here and, and try to make things happen. So, again, I'm, I second the motion of Neil, because I think it's the right thing to do right now.
Okay, and I, I have to, I end up, Sharon and I always have to clarify this each and every year, and I don't know why. The landfill funds, so the general public understands, there are laws governing them, they cannot be used for the operating budget, so they cannot go to this, anything in our operating budget. They cannot. So, I just want to make that very clear.
The two budgets?
You can't, Sharon, can you respond to that? We cannot do that.
I have. Right, Neil? I, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Even with the microphone, we might not be able to hear you.
The agreement says not to be used for operating, other than...
There's a switch on the top, just push it. Oh, is it on? No.
I don't think it, I thought I saw it on.
Is it on now?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Um, maybe if we could take a look at that, um, to see if there is a possibility to transfer that into conservation or the parks.
We'll have to look at the agreement, so if we could take some time, um, just to make sure before we say that it should not be.
We'll just find another quality of life to put the money at and use it somewhere.
Yeah. Mayor? I'm sorry, Alderman.
I was on that committee when that contract was written in nineteen ninety-one, and they were very specific that it absolutely would not cover operations.
Well, if you...
Well, it's in operations, it doesn't have to be in operations.
But it's for the little lake contribution towards that, which maybe could be for conservation. I'm, I, I just want to make sure before we...
Well, I understand, and I just use that as an example, it wasn't, not a fact, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not the Einstein up here, I just come up with ideas and throw them out there.
Yeah, because of reminders, there's nothing in the budget based on your recommendations, so that, that would require finding funds.
Well, the budget was just presented, we're up to, the recommendations came from you guys.
No, came from the Alderman.
To prove them and change them.
Came from the Alderman at Committee of the Whole, through the budget process.
The budget's not finalized till we finalize it, so we're working on finalizing it.
That, that's correct, I'm just saying that, that was the recommendation, so you have to find money.
Well, the recommendation came because you had it on paper and came to us, and it was a good idea at the time, and it looked good. So, now we found that we didn't like it, and maybe we want to change it, and we're going to find the money now.
And that is understood. No, the recommendation came from Committee of the Whole.
Don't make it sound like that, that it's not, can't happen.
I have a simple question for clarity at this point, is, uh, concerning, because I don't understand it, on the Alderman, on the, um, landfill, um, is that strictly, can only come to the city, or, uh, the?
Yes.
The Lake District is another unit of government?
No, only the city.
And only the city can tap into that?
Correct.
Okay. Secondly, in regards to Lake District, they don't own, uh, capital investment in property and so forth, but they own equipment and stuff. Is that considered a capital?
I think Sharon's going to have to, we're going to have to spend time, Jeff and Sharon, we're going to have to look at that agreement, we can't answer on the spot anything.
I know that the Lake District has to go through the process of planning many years in advance for each piece of equipment that wears out, and, and so, is there any chance it could be used in that way?
We'd have to research everything. Alderman Wolf.
You, you brought up a good point, because, uh, we own property, so, it, it kind of, it kind of goes, uh, hand in hand, so, um, and then one last thing I, I think, I think Neil said I'd like to agree with, is I thought that the, uh, the Lake District has done a fine job, and you see the very, it's very concerned people on there, um, trying to make it happen out there. You know, and, and, and even though you might live on there, it, it gives you extra reason to take pride in that, but I, you know, I, I feel the same way, on any street, I tell people to take pride in their property. So, I don't have a problem that, that you live on there, and, and that you want to keep it better and whatever, it, it, it's a good thing, so...
Alderman Kubaki.
I live on Lake Tenoun. For years, our, quality of our lake has gone, gone south with invasive species, which affects all the lakes. Um, we've yet to have starry stonework, uh, identified on the lake, and I'm, I'm certain that's going to happen. So, the lake, uh, residents took the approach that we wanted to have a lake associate or a lake district. So, we set up a lake district. We talked to the city. Um, city did want a part of that, uh, uh, district, so we excluded them from the district. The reason behind doing this is to improve the quality of the lake. Lake Tenoun has never, ever looked better of, because of the treatments that we've done to the lake this year, and it's all shouldered by the residents. It's, it's difficult for me to sit up here with three Aldermen who represent, who have a, certain pieces of, of the little lake, uh, to try to say, i- i- is it a consumable thing to contribute to one lake and leave the other lakes alone? It, it makes no sense to me. I mean, there's, there, there's no parity, there's no consistency in what we do, and granted, the lakes are different, uh, uh, the lakes are used for different purposes, but they all represent an economic boost to the city through, through taxation, and, and ever-growing taxation, as, as John had mentioned here. It, it's, it just amazes me that we would focus forty thousand dollars on one entity and disregard the others.
Alderman Wolf.
And, and I think that's why, well, first of all, act, uh, uh, I don't care what happens to a lake, it's, uh, mother nature, we can't control that. Second of all, um, the, uh, kind of lost my thought here. Um, give me a second, get back on track here. Um, as far as, uh, this lake, it's been an agreement that's been in place for a while, and I'm just not comfortable to cease things. Like I said, it's, in theory it was good, we brought it up at the cow, and I agreed as well, that we should treat each property the same. I, I, I still believe that way. Um, so, we should pay the same share per property, but to throw that at you in one meeting at one time, um, looking back at it, I'm not sure it was the right way we should have done it, you know, and, 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 uh, that's, that's where I'm at, that's the whole reason here. I think, like I said, I think the city and the Lake District needs to have many meetings this coming year for following budget years, and come up with some type of agreement, and, and make that happen. We shouldn't be thrown into a situation where I have to sit up here and say, "No" or "Yes," you know, "Too bad you guys pay, pay more money," or, "Do we keep it the same or not?" I mean, i- it's part of what we do up here, but I think we can spread that out and do it in a longer period of time. It's not like we just, uh, uh, knew about this contract yesterday, you know, for next year, this has been here for years, so, that's, that's my, my dilemma with the, with the situation.
Alderman Engelhardt.
Um, I just want to point out some, some points that need to, uh, come into play here. Uh, each of our three Lake Districts are, uh, very different, they're all, uh, established under the same Chapter Thirty-three of the state, um, what do you call it, the state statutes?
Statutes.
Yeah, okay. Um, and, um, it provides for each of those different kinds. Those lakes that are wholly in a municipality's jurisdiction are different than, uh, Lake Tenoun is, which was borders on a county. Therefore, the establishment of their Lake District comes under a difference, a part of that, or a different section of that, um, chapter. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And so, uh, there is differences there to consider. Also, the question about, uh, parity is a, is a fair question, but parity is very hard to achieve when everything is so different. So, perhaps, uh, it, it is something we need to look into in the future. So perhaps it is something we need to look into in the future. To Kevin's question, you know, why would you do one and not another? On the other hand, this is a precedent that's been here for decades and so it's something we need to consider from the standpoint that it has been here for decades in this form. Alderman Wolf made the question, or I believe, don't, don't tinker with some, don't fix something that's not broke. Well, maybe, maybe it's not broke, but maybe it does need a certain amount of addressing, as your lake district also would. With the city not being involved with that lake district, but the city owning properties that they do, I'm all in favor of having clarity that we would say the fees are due and we earmarked that we've paid our fees from the city for the parcels owned on Little Muskego, but that doesn't preclude the idea that we can't give support in return for the boost it's given to the city. That's a discussion we need to, to be focusing on to some degree, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kapusta?
I think we've got a lot of good points that I think everybody has mentioned. One of the things we need to keep in mind is, for some odd reason, we get to the ninth hour and it ends up being a semi-battle about what we're doing with our budget. It's very clear we need better collaboration and communication with all parties involved. I'd like to see as we move forward that there's great communication that next year at this point, we're able to present a dual budget where everybody's in great shape and we know what we're going to try and deal with. I think between the Lake District, the Committee of the Whole, we can come up with the resolutions to solve this. I don't think that's that difficult. You guys do a great job, commend you. I think we need to move forward. Neil's proposal's great and I think that's what we need to move forward on. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion regarding the motion on the floor?
Can I restate the motions overall? I gotta make sure I'm clear here. And Neil, tell me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
Your motion would be, the now therefore clause would say that the city would contribute 15% of the Little Muskego Lake District budget up to an amount and that amount would be calculated by taking the last five years of their budget and taking the average of that.
Yes.
And then the second now therefore that talks about the 28 parcels, are you saying that that comes out then? We're just, we're just at the 15%? Yes?
Well, no, I think the, yeah, but I think what John was saying is correct. We really need to get to where we pay our parcels. And then you do, you'd still do the 15%.
Motion was made.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand, but that's not Neil's motion.
All right, okay.
Did you want to?
I believe that's what we do now. Am I correct on that?
Right, the stats, state statute really we should follow is what we talked about a long time ago. You can still do the same thing monetarily, but you should start by paying for the 28 parcels and then pay up to a total of 15% or that dollar amount, that difference. Am I making sense? That's what John just alluded to.
That makes sense, but I think that should be some of the meetings that go all through the year.
Correct, John? That's what John just alluded to and I understand.
Yeah, otherwise this modification would turn this resolution into something that would collect the parcel fees plus 15% and that's not the intent of the resolution.
Correct. And, and also.
He was eliminating the parcel fee.
The statute does require us to pay our, we should be paying our parcel fee. You can go above that, but you should do that and then you can do that up to 15% and that average over five years and in total. Do you understand what I'm saying? Well, I don't think Jeff does. Sharon, do you?
I don't.
Sharon gets it.
So you're paying 15% of Little Muskego Lake budget and in addition to that, you're paying the 28 parcels?
No. The 28 parcels, you're gonna pay for the 28 parcels. I don't know how to state that.
There's a motion and a second, there has to be an amendment by Neil because the motion is.
There would have to be.
We need to vote on this or amend it. So.
I, I believe right now.
Can always be amended later.
The, the payment for the 28 parcels is, is just kind of like absorbed within that 15% that we pay. We don't pay an additional. It's, it's all part of one sum. It's just bookkeeping really internally inside of there. If you want to, if you want to break it out, break it out. But I, I think that sometimes we never know what their budget is when we get to our budgets, so we never know what their parcel cost is going to be, so, so it's just like the statement. I believe right now, what we do, anybody out there, the bookkeeper of the, of the Lake District, I believe that we just pay 15% of their budget.
Okay.
And that's, and that's what we pay.
Okay, so we, everybody understand what's on the table?
And, and we should have some meetings throughout the year. I mean, get to that, get that added in. You guys need to talk about it. It's gotta happen.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Show of hands, show of hands, I'm sorry. Five. Opposed, two. Okay, that's what, we'll move forward and Sharon will get more information. This will be on the council agenda later, so this is not the time. We've got, we know your name is here, that's for the council. This is Committee of the Whole. Okay? Continued discussion regarding Muskego Senior Taxi. Again, this is all part of the budget, but we just itemized it out to make it more clear for everyone.
Shoot.
Just reiterate that at a previous Committee of the Whole, there was a motion to contribute $5,000, to include $5,000 in the budget. It failed in a tie vote. Mayor's not allowed to break a tie at Committee of the Whole, but I did insert that $5,000 in the budget as proposed. And now open for discussion.
I think what we moved to this meeting because not everybody was there. I moved it to this meeting so we can have a revote on it, on should it be 5,000 or 15. So I make the motion to support the senior taxi at the $15,000 level, but putting it back out for a vote right now.
Second it.
Who seconded it? Tom?
Tom. Any discussion?
Yes. There was a resolution put together by the common council in 2008 that called for a contribution of $10,000 given to the senior taxi service with the proviso that they were going to be self-sufficient by 2010. This is 2019 and they're still not self-sufficient. The mayor put together an ad hoc committee to explore, to investigate, some ask, ask questions and add some help to the senior taxi to put them in, in line for being self-sufficient. The mayor asked Menominee Falls to come in. Menominee Falls runs a profitable senior taxi. They provide a substantial amount, more rides than, than our service does. Or, I'm sorry, Maguannago, not Menominee Falls.
Correct. I have to say, I'm really confused now.
Yeah, Maguannago, Maguannago. Gentlemen came in, went through their, their budget, how they do things, how they approach, and they also put out their hand to the senior taxi people to further discussions with them. And to my understanding, that's never been followed through with by the senior taxi. We also looked at Elm Brook. Elm Brook is supported by the city of Brookfield. They provide a significant number of, of rides in addition to what we provide. So we tried to go through their budget and we asked for some specific information. And as far as I'm concerned, when you come to the public and ask for money, you better be prepared to answer some questions. And if you don't want to answer the questions, then don't ask for the money. We've asked repeatedly for a breakdown of what their, of what their costs are, specifically personnel costs, and have never received any information with regard to that. So what we had to do is to kind of pick and choose through the information that we, we could put together through documents like the 990s, which are, are online and something that we can point to. If we look at those and take a look at their, and again, I'm gonna focus in on, on the, on the personnel costs. In 2015, the personnel expense was $49,730. In 2016, they were at 64.7. At 2017, 88.9. 2018, the reported, we don't have a reported number, but it's somewhere between 110,000 to 112. If you look at the all-in on their financial statements, it's up to $123,000. Huge expense for a small organization. If we back out what we understand to be, and again, I don't have all these, all this, all these facts because they were never provided to us, but if we back out the, I believe, one and a half people that work there, we end up with a director that's earning somewhere between 70 and 75,000, which, which is insane. If you look at Maguannago, who, who, we provide 7,000 rides, Maguannago provides 33,000 rides. Their executive directors pay is $53,000 plus bonus based on net income. We don't have any net income. Elm Brook, they provide 12,000 rides, again, we provide 7,000. Their part-time executive director is paid $15 an hour on a part-time basis. If you project it out to full-time, that's about $31,000. So once again, this organization, we believe it's necessary. We believe it, we want it to be functional, we want it to be self-supporting, but we want to, we need some information to, to, to achieve that end and we simply haven't gotten that type of information. So based on that, I can't support that. I can support the $5,000 for another year, but I certainly can't go beyond that.
Sorry, Alderman.
Well, well, once, once again, like a lot of the information that came out of the ad hoc, people in the ad hoc committee, this is, this is kind of half truce, half baked stuff. I have a little handout here that explains how that, that salary or why that salary changes. You'll see that the salary that he was talking about in 2015 was for 200, 200 rides and we had one person, Karen. She, she did all the scheduling, she took all the calls. She recruited and trained people. She did a lot of the volunteer, a lot of the office work herself. She tried to write grants in her spare time. She paid all the bills. She took care of all the repairs on the cars, getting, getting those scheduled. She drove vehicles. So she was a one, a one-person senior taxi. And yes, the, the salary was low that year because there was one person. In 2016, we went up to one and a half persons because we had, instead of the 120, 1200 rides, we had 300 rides and we found out that we could not make Karen work that hard. There were, there's not enough hours in the day to do that. In 2017, we went up to between 400 and 600 rides and we, we added another half person in the, in the office. So we were up to two people then. And yes, the salary budget did increase. Then in 2018, we went up to 600-plus rides. And yes, we had to add another half person in, in the, in the driver, full-time driver we added. And that's the one full-time driver that we have. And she's also, does a lot of the scheduling for the repair of the cars, which is, which is something that the city of Muskego demands us to do because of we're a taxi in the city of Muskego. So, to, yeah, while you're right, it's true that our budget has gone up, but we've gone up from one person to three people. And it's because our rides have gone from 120 to, to 600, over 600. There's six, over 600 people that, that rely on us for a ride every year. I, I, you know, I, I drove, I drove seven people today, every single one of them. Several of them went to doctors, several of them went, were, were young people who went to job training and hopefully they'll be, they'll be able to, after that job training, become a productive, tax-paying citizen. If, if, just for the, you know, the, the, the things that have come out of that ad hoc committee, or not out of the ad hoc committee, members of the ad hoc committee. I don't know how that, that, that letter that was presented several weeks ago ever got written. I think it was written under the guise that it was, was, was from the ad hoc committee. I didn't see it until Friday before it was presented. There was no input on it at all from me. And, and to, to come up and say, this is the report from the ad hoc committee, that, that's not only wrong, it's totally unethical. And, and to do that kind of stuff is just, is just really, really bad. And you can raise your hand and you can, you can yell back at me, but darn it, why did, why, why would you, why would you do something like that? You know? And, and this, this, this is the most compassionate thing that, that the city of Muskego does. We take care of our old, our older citizens who no longer can, can drive by themselves. Some of them don't even have a family anymore. So they, they have nothing. So, and, and we, and we, we try to, we could, we could do the same thing that, that Maguannago does. And if you, if you go to that tape and you listen to it again, he says, just charge them until they can't pay anymore. And boy, I think that's real compassionate. You stick a pig in it, you know, stick a fork in a pig. I, I thought his, I thought his presentation was, while he has, while he's built on good pillars, a good, a good compassionate help, he, he just, when it comes to helping people, I thought it was terrible. He talks about just, just padding his budget by, by charging people in a wheelchair who can't do anything but use him. Just charge them, charge them as much as you need to make your budget look good. And to try to compare us with five cars and 30 volunteer drivers to an organization that has over 26 cars, some of which are, are four-wheelchairs, some of which are driving children to school in the morning and, and taking them back home afterwards. It's just, again, it's the same thing that you're doing with the lakes. Yeah, they're both senior taxis, but boy, they're sure different. And to, and to, to sit there and say that, that there's bad business practices, it's just such a bad thing to say. It's such a, such a, such a stretch of the truth. And it's such a non-compassionate, inhumane thing to say. That this, 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 this.
Alderman Madden.
Organization has gone from, under that, under the, the leadership of Karen, has gone from nearly being almost fiscally insolvent in 2014 to something right now that the city has got that's darn good. And, and, and to, to cut, cut back on the funding, again, just a lack of compassion and a lack of foresight on the people, peoples who do it.
There was no resolution at Committee of the Whole. So Alderman Madden?
I would just like to say, I don't want to yell at you. And I believe that you do an absolutely fantastic job, there's no question about it. But when you come to the city and you ask for tax dollars and you refuse to be transparent when our city attorney expresses the laws, the letter I read said, we, the board has chose not to share that information. It's a law. How are we supposed to move forward when you won't be transparent?
If I could, I just want to jump in because I do think there's some discrepancy. I appreciate this information, but in 2018, it says three full-time employees. I can, we can go back and listen to the recordings of the ad hoc committee. That was not presented to us. It was one full-time and two part-time.
Right. Do not two part-times make a full-time?
No, you spelled it out. We can go back and listen to the recording. You spelled it out clearly. Who did what? It was very clear. I just want, I just want to say that's a discrepancy. Alderman Kubaki, I believe was next.
No, I just want to say that, that I have a 96-year-old father. I'm the care provider and I object to the word not being compassionate. I take him to each and every one of his appointments. I take care of his needs. I make sure that he's, he's on time for things. I'm sure he's neatly dressed and everything's taken care of. So don't even suggest that, Neil, don't go there, all right? Just don't go there. Second of all, I'm going to reiterate what, what Alderman Madden said. You've got to provide this information. You're a 501(c)(3). You gotta do this. You, you've got to provide this information. You also are.
Just hang on, if the audience, hang, just hang on.
You also have to be very careful when it comes to any kind of politicking call. That's also a no-no as a charitable 501(c)(3) program. So you gotta be careful. When we ask for information, we need that information to, to assist you in, in making your senior taxi grow. There's no reason that we can't approach the, the school district. We should have done that. You say it's not, not a big factor? It is a big factor. Taking a look at mileage costs, when I first, when I asked the first question of the, during the ad hoc committee of what your cost per mile was, people looked at me like there was a deer in the headlights, no idea what that number was. When Maguannago came back, when Maguannago came back and asked the same question. When Maguannago, when Maguannago came back and asked the same question, you referred them to me. You don't know the numbers to be able to make this thing work. We tried to, to help and yeah, it's, it, maybe it's a little bit more cut and dried, Neil, but that's the only way you can tear apart a business and make it work and make it work.
And let's keep our comments here to the decision-makers. Alderman, Alderman Engelhardt was next.
And disclosure, IRS disclosure, public disclosure, 990 shall be disclosed. That's the part that shall be disclosed. One of the things that's happening here is.
Could you say that again? What, what did, what did you say?
Form 990 shall be disclosed for the last three years, current three years. If you ask the IRS to, they would, that's what they would give you. The IRS has, like in our, in our income tax returns, there's a long form required of those who are in that area and there is a short form. The Muskego Senior Taxi files the short form and it does not require the divulging of the amounts paid to individuals. In the longer form, if I'm understanding correctly, key people and those officers or paid directors, meaning paid board members. or paid directors, meaning paid board members, are disclosed in the long form, which is different than the short form. But the IRS ruling is it's 990 or 990 EZ is what is disclosed to public. And I'll ask the city attorney if I'm correct on that or not.
There's 990s that are submitted by the nonprofits, and there's additional info like the chief executive officer, and that's what the IRS can present that's supposed to be turned over if requested.
The IRS says, and supporting documents, meaning the schedules that go with those.
And that's one of the things that's in there.
Supporting documents to the form. Like if you have a Schedule C or a Schedule SE with your income tax, that would be the supporting document. So what has been disclosed is meeting the requirements of the IRS, as far as I can conclude. Secondly, the taxi was brought into being by request in the community, and the city got behind it. As much as I've been able to ferret out, because I wasn't part of it at the beginning, $10,000 was given to the taxi to establish it. You could say we underwrote it. The underwriting caused it to be able to come into being. Thereafter, they were given support or sponsorship, which has continued. Why has it continued? Because they reached out to be self-sufficient. They reached for grants, they reached for funds, they do fundraising, they do everything they can to make their budget work. The budget was in poor shape a few years ago. The man who had done so much, Dan Henry, for it was passing from the scene, and perhaps things kind of fell apart at that time. I commend the board of the taxi for hiring someone who could put it in order. And they hired someone and said, "Go to work and get this thing going." It basically was a one-man operation to make it run at that point, as all operations of this type have to have someone who will make it go. And that has happened. In fact, it has prospered, it has moved forward. It went from one to two cars and now has five cars. It has met the needs of our community and follows its mission statement very well. It is not comparable to Maguano because Maguano chases all kinds of things that this one does not chase by its mission statement or its intent. But the intent of serving our community has been very, very well brought forward, and this group has done their job. So in seeking, they are asking for support or sponsorship. We are not making them or breaking them. They will find enough money and keep going, I believe, whether we do or don't. The question is, does this council believe in what other councils before us have believed in, and do we support this in the community? So the question should be, you know, are they doing the job? And if so, how much do we want to support them? And the rest of the questions have been brought up and thoroughly thrown around, and this thing has just been way too big for the question that is in front of us. So I think we should consider...
I think Alderman Borgman was next.
...an amount for them and go forward.
Alderman Borgman?
I just wanted to bring up the point that Alderman Engelhardt had brought up, that they asked for the information on the salaries. They were given the 990s as the law requires. They were given the 990s as the law requires. And that's...
No, we looked them up on our own.
I pulled them out. We never got them from anybody.
They were not provided to us.
Alderman Madden?
Yeah, I just wanted to correct that. I did the research. I found the 990s online, could not find the 2018, so I don't know where that final salary went to 2018 or where it's going to end up in 2019, obviously, since it's not over. Fact is, we asked for the information many times, starting in August, and the last letter I got from the president of the board was that the board has chosen not to give that information.
There was a 990 provided. I do want to clarify.
First of all, this is for up here. Hang on, guys. Let us hash this out here.
We have to keep the conversation here, but I'll correct it because you are correct. We did, it was in the, it was in the Resolution 31, 2019...
And which one was it?
The council resolution.
Right, but I mean, which 990?
It was 17 and 18. 2017 and 18.
So we did have the 18. I just didn't see that one.
Well, we didn't have the full. It was like a couple pages. It wasn't the full document.
It wasn't like the ones we pulled up on...
Correct, correct. So I want to clarify that.
Alderman Wolf?
Okay, I'll take credit for all this. I put the Band-Aid on last year. I changed my mind and went with the senior taxi. And did we give them additional $10,000 or was it up to $10,000? I can't remember exactly what it was. And I did state that, I'm putting a Band-Aid on it. I want this to succeed. It looks like it's moving forward, it looks like it's moving in the right spot. And I did say I wanted to do it for one year. Well, now we're up to two years, okay? We're coming back. From looking at this and everything I've seen, and that's why I brought this vote back up, because we were missing one Alderman, and it went to a tie, and I thought it was not fair that not everybody should be included in the vote. So I had it brought up into this meeting here to have the vote done properly. I made the motion, it's been seconded, so you guys know where I stand. I mean, it's pretty obvious. But, you know, I'll restate a few things. The Band-Aid, it's going on again this year. And the Band-Aid is there because, if I understand correctly, I'll paraphrase this, however, you need, the taxi needs the money to prove something for the funding or something. There's something, you have to have a certain balance or something for funding. So I don't know all that, but there's some facts into that. You know, I'll go back on my speeches here that I always go on when I want to get in situations like this. When I ran for Alderman, I ran to keep the community safe, to provide a nice place economically for seniors to still live as they get older. To make it affordable also for young families. So, I mean, that's just some of the reasons I did this. And, you know, and I've done it several years now. You know, I don't know. I'm not stuck on the salary, okay? I mean, it's a nonprofit organization. It's not easy to find somebody good to run a nonprofit organization, hopefully honestly. And so you provide the salary as a whole, you know, we're not pressing everybody what everybody makes up here, what they should make and what they don't make and whatever. We can go through the whole city, you know? We have many departments we can go through and wonder why people make what they make. But we're not up here to do that. And last of all, it's a quality of life issue here again. You know, what are we providing for our seniors? What are we doing for the people who've been here who need help that, you know? And I said this the last meeting, we're all getting older. You know, God forbid, we're going to need a senior taxi someday. But, you know, the quality of life, and we give $5,000, so we're going to give $10,000 more, and there's 25,000 people here, and of course, it includes children, so it's not a 100% fair statement, but that's 30-some cents a person. You know? I mean, I don't know what else. That's why I brought this to a head, you know? And we can discuss this till we're blue in the face. And, you know, it was fine and dandy when it was a tie and it failed, that we pushed this through and put it right on the budget. It failed, I'm happy. It's moving through, that's it. See ya. Well, you guys can look at who you're electing and who's up there and why you're doing that and what they're trying to push through. I can go through the MAA, I can go through the Lake District, I can go to the senior taxi, I can go to the festival committee. We are not friendly to our community, and we need to be friendly to our community. And, you know, like me, hate me because of it, but you know what? Someone's got to say it, and I'm the guy who says it, so.
Alderman Hamel?
There have been a lot of good points, Mayors. I don't think there's anyone arguing that it provides a needed and beneficial service to the city. The quality of life, you know, I agree with what was just said, that sometimes we need to do a little bit more for the community, and we look to put that off on other groups, other people. However, what I don't like is the lack of transparency. I think if somebody is coming to the city for money, we need to see, you know, what we request for financials, balance sheet, budget, bank statements, whatever it might be. I think that's, we can bring up at a later discussion if we could add that for later times to discuss. And I think if we request something, it should be provided right away.
If I could jump in, that's what we do with the 501(c)(3), the Test Corners Volunteer Fire Department. And all the financial detail is provided on a quarterly basis. And so that's how that resolution got approved by all of you, because that's what we standardly do, and that's normal.
Correct, but I'm saying for every organization, 501(c)(3) or anybody that wants money, we should adhere to the same procedures on that, and it doesn't seem like we are.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Would that mean we had to go to a contract if we give them any money?
It's a 501(c)(3). That's the difference.
Isn't it a contract with Test Corners?
Yes, it is, but it's a 501(c)(3).
And it's a huge contract, and it's a huge organization compared to a small senior taxi.
I don't think we have to do it the same way for, you know, just to have an outline of what would be needed.
I think the bottom line is, and I've done a lot of volunteer work over the years, I even worked for a 501(c)(6), not a 3, so that's different. And I know the, I understand the rules very well, and everyone in a 501(c)(3) is, they're usually very transparent, because that's what the government, the IRS, expects, and I think that's what you're saying. And, I mean, they're there for the people, and they're getting funded. In this case, it's federal dollars. The ADRC is federal dollars, Medicaid is federal dollars, so that's just standard. So I just want to point that out.
Alderman Wolf?
As long as you want to be transparent, I think we can find money in the budget way over and above the 15, I'm sorry, the $10,000, because the 5 is already in there. If we look at grants, rebates, sale of equipment and automobiles, so say DPW or police department or whoever gets vehicles, it says it's $55,000 for this, but they don't tell you how much they're getting back for their car. Where's that money going? Or we do a Focus on Energy project like we're going to do on Janesville Road, we're probably going to get $10,000 back on that, if not $20,000. And that's not put in, it's saying we need $55,000 to do their project, but we're not telling that. So where's the transparency on the money that's coming back into the budget? So the money's there, and we're saying that we're going out there, we can't afford this and that, the money's there, believe me.
I'm going to ask our finance director to come up and clarify that.
Well, if the rebates come back in, I'm not wrong on that.
No, you're not, but there aren't guarantees.
There are items in our revenue called sale of fixed assets.
But it's not on our budget?
Yes, it's in the budget.
100%?
Yes.
We don't know exactly what we're getting.
All the trade-ins, sales, they go into sale of fixed assets.
We have no idea what we're getting on rebates from Focus on Energy. None. How do you have it in there?
They're within the revenue section.
It's not in there.
I can email you all the accounts and the details.
It's not in there. I asked for that already, and no one's given it to me.
You didn't ask me.
I asked, they have no idea, no what the dollar amount is going to be.
You did not ask me.
No, I didn't ask you. I asked the person to put the rebates together, and said they have no idea.
Well, you can ask me, and I will send you the information.
I'll start asking you. But the money's in there.
Yes.
Correct.
It's not exact either. Even the grant money coming back.
So we need to wrap up. Is there any kind of recommendation and where the funds are come from if there's some kind of recommendation?
Mayor? Alderman?
I just very briefly want to say, I think you're setting a very poor precedence in letting the world know that you're willing to give tax dollars away to charities that are not trans, that are not clear and responding as requested.
I want to clarify, because I know they're raising their hands, so you need to understand, I, again, I've done nonprofit work. Detailed financials are what's pulled out of, in this case, I know it's QuickBooks, it's the full detail, and that's what's been requested, and that full detail has not been provided. You've provided some bulk numbers, but not the details. So I appreciate you've provided something, but not full, okay? Okay, full detail.
Alderman Wolf?
I'd like to call this to a vote.
There is a motion right in a second.
There is?
There is a motion in a second.
What is the motion?
The motion was for $15,000.
Well, there's five already in there? The additional $10,000 or...
No, I put the motion in for $15,000.
Another 15? There's five in there already?
10 and 5.
Another 10.
Another 10.
So a total of 15? Okay. And Tom, you seconded that? Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Okay. Sir, we can't have it here. This is our discussion. Thank you, we appreciate it. We understand. We understand. We appreciate it.
Let us vote here. Let us vote here.
Okay. Please show of hands, those in favor. Five? Those opposed? Two. Okay. And did we say where it was coming from? Nobody knows. I think there's a money tree out front. Somebody go pick it later.
We didn't say where it was coming from before. When you were happy it failed at 3 to 3, you would put the $5,000 in, you could have put the 15 in.
I'm just saying, we don't know where it's coming from. Nobody's directed, so anyhow, that'll be for another future meeting. You'll have to determine where the money's coming from. Okay, moving on. This is from a previous call meeting, I believe, elected official salary discussion. Sharon? We're on the next item. Elected official, oh, Alderman Kubaki, I don't know who's doing this.
I think Sharon provided all this information to everyone on the council with regard to what mayors, alderpersons, council presidents, and judges were making in various communities across, in Wisconsin.
Excuse me, we have to ask everyone if they're going to have discussions to leave the room. I apologize, Kevin. We have to continue our...
Thank you for all coming tonight. I know for some of you, it was a big, a hard chore.
It'll be up on council again, which is the next meeting.
You might want to just give it a minute?
Sure.
Just so that...
I'm looking for that. Oh, here it is, right here.
Some of them came by senior taxi.
Came by senior taxi, saw that.
I'm thinking...
They were good.
I think we're good.
Sharon provided all of us with information with regard to incomes for mayors, alderpersons, whatever, and judges in certain communities of Wisconsin. The full-time mayor positions are Brookfield, Greenfield, Nina, New Berlin. Brookfield kind of throws the numbers off a little bit. We're running at 66.4. I think the closest community to us size-wise is Nina, and they're running about 79. Alderpersons seem to be fairly consistent across the board. I think we're in good shape there. Judges, they're everywhere. I mean, they're, some are three times the amount of what we're looking at for judges. In taking a look at this, it's my suggestion that we maybe massage the judge up to a figure of about $18,000. That was changed, I think, three years ago, up to 15. Does that sound right? I believe. Our judge, wasn't that salary change?
17, 2017.
2017? Oh, right, okay. Oh, I see, yeah. So, you know, we can probably take a look at moving that one up a little bit, maybe to 18 or so. Mayor, I think, is extremely low. Our last change was in 2005, and I recommend that we should be in the 72, 75 range for a mayor. And those are just my comments regarding salaries.
Alderman Wolf?
As long as we got the can of worms open here and no one can give us a raise but ourselves, I would think it'd be totally unfair to only raise certain people. And if you look at dates on here, the Aldermen have not had any raises since 2002. So if you're going to raise anybody, they're the ones that have not seen a raise. And not saying that we have to raise anybody, but you can't exclude one and raise two. You can't do it. It's impossible. It's not, it's not, it's not right. It's not, it's not, it's not right.
Well, if the salaries are in line, if, if the salaries are in line, why would you change them? If they're out of line, then you want to change them. But it's up, you know, it's your call. I don't care.
You're brought up, you guys brought up the, you're the one who brought up about salaries to bring us all forward.
Yeah, for the mayor and for the judge. You want to change ours, go right ahead, make a recommendation, Rob.
Well, I'm just saying, it's not fair to raise two out of three.
Go ahead, make a recommendation.
It's not fair to raise two out of three. I haven't heard any recommendation yet, as far as a, a motion for a recommendation.
Then you weren't listening, because I made 18,000 for the judge.
Did you, did you make a motion?
2,000, no, I'm just, I'm throwing up for discussion.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Well, it's a discussion.
So that's, that's why I brought up my discussion.
Alderman Madden?
I, I just want to say that I, it seems like the city has been kind of stagnant when it comes to having people actually run against us. I mean, some of us have been here for 100 years.
I always have someone run against me.
And I think part of that might be because they look at our, all our salaries and say, yeah, I don't think so. But in the mayor's case especially, I think as Kevin had pointed out, it's, it needs to come up, and I'm not opposed to what you're saying, Rob. I don't, I, as long as you don't come back with 10,000 a year.
Raised 10,000 more?
No. Alderman Hamel?
Yeah, I agree with what Kevin said. If they're in line, you know, I'm fine with that. If they're out of line, I think we need to come up in line, and I, you know, maybe 17, 5 for a judge, you know, it's close to the 18.
That's what I would say.
And, I don't know. What, what did you say for the mayor?
72, 75, that range.
Yeah, I was thinking 70 to 75.
Yeah.
So it's the same ballpark.
Alderman Engelhardt?
Yeah, I heard it well said when I ran for Alderman the first time. You don't do it for the money.
Yeah.
And, well, you're elected, so you can say about all of it. I guess I can agree with that, but, you know, it's nice that we get something for it. I'm perfectly comfortable with where we're at right now as an Alderman myself, regardless of what's been said about the number of years. I do look, and I tried to look online to find out what, not just this information, which is local, but maybe across the state, what kind of numbers were for mayors too, and it's all over the board. It's hard to discern, and I'm, I realize that it's going to be hard, because we don't know what the responsibilities are in some of those cases. We're not even sure in these comparisons here that our mayor is equivalent to other mayors as far as responsibilities and so forth. So that's a, that's a roll-in-the-dice type of thing, as far as I'm concerned. However, in the fact that we haven't seen it for quite a while, I will concur with Alderman Kubaki on both of his suggestions as being relevant and pretty much on target. So somewhere in those ranges makes sense to me.
Well, I can say, I'm going to go back to that if we raise two out of three, it's not fair. I feel that I put a lot of effort into my job, I'm very vocal, I listen to the people, and, and, and if you're going to raise two, I'm going to vote no. I, it's just not right. I, I don't believe it's right. You can't just say, one elected official should be, get a raise and the rest shouldn't. That's like saying the police chief should get a raise and, and the rest of his department shouldn't. You know, I, I, I don't know. You know, that's my opinion. I don't think it, I don't think it's, it's correct.
Alderman Kubaki?
I make a motion, we raise the mayor's pay to $72,000, and the judges' pay to $17,500.